The sign up sheet for the comp plan workshop. And I have several people that put opposed. So I just wanted to make it clear that we're not making a decision today. It's just a workshop. So I just wanted you all to know if you weren't clear what that was then. We have an appeal and then we have a workshop. So I wanted to make sure you sign in on the correct file.
How do you know if you did or if you didn't?
So I'll hold this one and you can sign in on that one. Yes, so this was the comp plan. There was another one. And Steve, we're ready. Yes, it is.
All right, it is 1:32 and we will bring this meeting into order. Roll call of the commissioners.
President.
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 President. Anybody in here needing special assistance in visual, hearing to proceed? Hearing procedures are on the screen there. We will be hearing appeal file number MOD 0001-23, AM 0006-23, AM 0008-23. If you've signed up to speak, when you speak, state your name for the record. The microphone does not amplify, that's just so that it comes in clear on the recording. Any personal or derogatory comments about another person or their position will not be allowed. Clapping, cheering, or booing, we'd prefer that you didn't do that. Public testimony. Anyone has a written statement they would like to enter into the record and do so with the court there? We'll call for supporting public testimony, neutral public testimony, and then opposing testimony. Anyone in the audience who did not sign up to speak who would like to enter any comments into the record? Not a mad rush. And then we'll have a call for discussion between the commissioners. And we'll have an applicant rebuttal. Then we'll close the hearing to public testimony and call for deliberations by the commissioners.
Travis, do you have a seat next to you?
Actually, there's one right here.
We do ask that your comments will be specific to the file that we're addressing at that time. Don't go off on rabbit trails and other issues, but strictly to the file that we're talking about. And if you agree with a previous speaker, then just for time reasons, because there's so many people here today, then just say I agree with that person or I echo that person. And that way we keep things moving. But this time, I will turn it over to Commissioner Britt.
Ladies and commissioners, members of the public, thank you for attending this afternoon. My name is Daniel Britt, my name is staff for the record. There's one seat available, two, if anybody wants to take that before we get started.
Somebody's...
I just can't have anyone standing in the doorway for fire code. So if you want to come in, stand, set the window sealed somewhere else.
An extra seat right over here. I don't mind. I'll go ahead and get started then.
All right.
So we're here this afternoon to discuss appeal to modification MOD 0001-23. We're here discussing topics or contents of CUP 0009-22. The appeal for that CUP has long lapsed. So we will be focusing on just the modification portion this afternoon. So these are the applicable standards for which the modification was reviewed against. BCRC 12-112 is interpretation relation to other ordinances. So letter D, use of the following words shall apply. Number one, shall, unless, or mandatory, and not discretionary territory. Excuse me. May is permissive and should refers to the guideline that is encouraged but not mandatory. BCRC 12-819 definitions, under the letter S, we find definition for setback. Setback is defined in our code, the minimum distance by which a building or a structure must be separated from a street right of way, easement, or property line. Applicants are requesting, have requested modification of conditional use permit CUP 0009-22 to allow for private community facility use and to reduce the wetland setback for proposed cabins and relocate quote-unquote the event center building. The property is currently developed as single-family dwellings and an outbuilding. Parcel there highlighted in red is the parcel we're talking about this afternoon. It's an unplanted parcel that's approximately 36 and a half acres. Current zoning there is AF10 and the land use designation is ag forest land. The access to this parcel is Renko Loop, which is a Bonner County owned and maintained right of way for the gravel travel service. So this is a map applicant, the environmental features found on the property highlighted in the purple there. The site does contain map slopes, the site does contain map wetlands, the site does not contain any river streams or drainage on a lake. It's within special flood hazard zone X, which means the chance of flooding on that parcel is minimal if not at all. Services that are available on site are an individual well, individual septic system, fire protection is afforded through Westside Fire District, power is provided through Northern Lights and is within Lake Pontcharlais School District number 84. These are the following agencies that were routed for the modification on January 31st of this year. DEQ, Anna Health District, US Army Corps of Engineers, Bonner County Road and Bridge all submitted letters of either recommendation or comments on this file. Idaho Transportation Department, Idaho Fish and Game replied with no comment. All our agencies did not reply. So original public comments that came in back in January were concerns over water, security, wildlife, wetlands, proper permitting. We received one comment on this appeal that came in, I believe last night, I received it this morning. It addressed concerns about soils, groundwater, neighborhood, or sorry, neighborhood conflicts, property values, flooding and damage, septic systems, wildlife, building in a wetland. I don't know, I know that email was sent to all three commissioners. I'm not sure if it's in your binders this afternoon or not because of its late arrival. So I'm looking at BCRC 12-335 is the public use table. Part of this application was for a private community facility. In addition to having to meet all the performance standards in BCRC 4.2, the applicant is required to be condition three that we see here on the screen in the code in the table. Note three specifically says the site needs to be accessed by a road, recorded easement, public right of way, and constructed to the appropriate Title II or Appendix A standards. You know, Renko Loop is a private, or sorry, is a public road owned and maintained by Bonner County. So they're meeting that criteria. They met all the performance standards found in BCRC 12-4.2. Let's look at the private community facility they have labeled as event center on the parcel. Part two of their request was the wetland setback. As we get into this, BCRC 12-730, the purpose of this subchapter is to provide measures to protect and maintain wetlands. Looking at BCRC 12-733, A and B is the wetland buffers and setbacks language. Governing body may, as we've learned, is permissible, require areas adjacent to wetlands, new subdivisions, conditional use permits, or zone change sites based on the type of wetland determined by Idaho Department of Fish and Game, US Fish and Wildlife Services, US Army Corps of Engineers, or the applicants design professional. B, a building setback to a wetland, a minimum of 40 feet unless it can be demonstrated by the wetlands professional that the wetlands are of low quality and have low level functions as a wetland, are heavily disturbed, and determined by the US Corps of Army Engineers or the applicants certified wetlands delineator. Setbacks to low-quality wetlands may, as it's permissive, be reduced to 20 feet. There's no requirement that a wetland setback needs to be 40 foot in that language. This is looking at the property highlighted again in red. The areas that are green and purple that you see on the screen are a wetland boundary found on the property. This is a close-up view of that same shot. And this is more or less the area where the cabins are being proposed. This is not to scale. We don't have that technology in the fire department to make that happen. So it's rough at best. But it's a general vicinity. This is a close-up look of that map that we just viewed. Those are the three cabins that we see in gray. The wetland boundary is highlighted there in green. The orange would be the 40 foot that we were discussing earlier. So the Army Corps of Engineers did comment on this and the applicants did apply for some permitting through the Army Corps. There was a 57-page report done. That's included in your binders this afternoon. This is a summary of an email to the applicant from the Army Corps of Engineers that was submitted by the applicant to staff. "Well Eric, thank you for reaching out to the Corps to inquire on the nationwide permit verification letter received for project number NWW-2023-0028. Corps retreat." To recap our discussion, the Corps authority under section 404 of the Clean Water Act is to regulate the discharge or dredge and/or fill material into the waters of the US, including jurisdictional wetlands. If the proposal to the, if the proposal to construct a building does not include discharge or fill material, the Corps simply does not have the authority to regulate the activity, i.e. authorize a permit. Proposal to install helical screw piles into the wetland does not constitute a discharge or fill material, therefore the Corps does not have the authority to regulate it. The findings and facts have not changed since the time the staff report was prepared, nor have the conditions of approval. Here's a couple examples of structures that have been built in the wetland in Bonner County with either a 404 permit or a wetland delineation. The image there on the left that you see is just out a mile away down the street from Renko Loop on Flatwater Lane, which is near the subject parcel we're talking about today. The shot on the right with all those homes in there, if you can see them through that green, that's the leclite area. And I know for a fact that some of those homes were built with the 404 permit. So staff finds that this proposal is consistent with Bonner County Vice Code and the hearing examiner did approve this proposal. I conclude my presentations, make sure that I can entertain any questions you might have.
I don't have any. So was there any evidence presented that this was a low-quality wetland? Or quality wetland to kind of accommodate the request for a reduced setback?
So I believe that applicants do have a delineation done on the property. They are here today, so I'm sure they can discuss it more thoroughly than I could.
I'll wait for that.
No question.
Applicant? Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Okay. You can use the podium or the mic, either one.
You know, actually. Okay, good afternoon, everybody. My name is David Hunter-Wangler. I live a couple of properties down from Nicole Wilson's place. I reside at 2867 Renko Loop. And there's this 1999. You know, I'm just going to kind of make a couple of statements here. Once again, I said this in the modification hearing, the last modification hearing. I'm vehemently opposed to both the initial conditional use permit and all the modifications associated with the original. Firstly, I'd like to discuss the wetland setback modification. When the applicant originally filed for the conditional use permit, the applicant knew exactly where the setback wetland boundaries were.
Okay, I'm going to stop you for a second because this time was for the applicant.
I'm the applicant.
Okay, sounded like you were against the applicant there for a minute. I was getting confused.
Mr. Gumbel?
Oh, okay.
Let me explain. So Steve, in the appeal file, the applicant is the appellant. And we have the land use applicants, which are the property owners. So, and we don't do these all that often, so I should have prepped you a little bit better. So he's the appellant, then we should give time to the land use, you know, the landowner to give a statement as well and give a comment.
Thank you.
All right. Clear, right? All right. So kind of reiterate here. When the applicant originally filed the conditional use permit, the applicant knew exactly where the setback wetland boundaries were. It was page three of the original application. Six months later, the applicant applies for a modification to the required 40-foot wetland setback. To me, this is the major point of contention because of the requirements were clear initially and it's in Bonner, it's in Bonner County code. The applicants knew exactly what the parameters were and at the end of the day should adhere to them. We are, you know, so why are we even entertaining these concessions when it was clearly drawn out to begin with? And more importantly, the wetlands are protected for a reason. They serve as a major function and role to our fragile ecosystems and should take priority in this instance. Secondly, the original application stated the purpose of farm-to-fork was for a retreat. I believe that's what Mr. Hanson had kind of quoted and said, educational retreat. Bonner County Code 12-333, paragraph 27 clearly defines what the meaning of a retreat is. However, in no part of the Bonner County Code does it define private community facility. From that point, we defer to the Merriam-Webster Dictionary for definition of code. This is definitely perplexing to me because at the end of the day, who's left to make the interpretation based on that definition? And from my understanding of the Bonner County Code, two conditional use permits cannot be used for the same property. We have, so we have retreat and private community facility. I believe Alice Maglevy will be speaking a little bit more on the issue as the meeting progresses, and I defer to her sensibility and points regarding the issue. Thirdly, the idea that this modification is moved forward without the necessary civil infrastructure in place is also perplexing. At the moment, a well that is producing a gallon a minute will obviously not suffice for this project. This information came from the Idaho Department of Water Resources. The applicant stated in the applications that they would be well drilling, they would be drilling a second well. Okay, but the point is currently there's one gallon a minute and possibly another well that may be producing additional water, but at what rate? And what determines the sufficiency of water with an estimated staff and guests of 60 or more? Obviously, this does not demonstrate adequate water provisions. See Bonner County Code 12-333, or paragraph 27. Assuming it's paragraph 27. And then fourthly, again, lack of civil infrastructure. They're required to show a demonstration of adequate sewer. I believe Jennifer Ekstrom with Idaho Conservation League and Alice Maglevy, property owner adjacent to the applicants, will be elaborating further regarding the current state of the permitting process, which the applicants have failed to adequately address. Thanks for your consideration.
Can I ask you the question I had asked the planner?
Sure.
So when you're looking at the setbacks for the wetlands, was there a determination, to your knowledge, that it was demonstrated to be a poor functioning wetland?
I'm going to defer that to Jennifer Ekstrom, if you don't mind. She's going to be a little bit more informed on that.
I didn't see it in the application and I went through the, went back a few times. And one of the questions here is, do you authorize a change of the setbacks because it does say minimum of 40, unless it's a poor functioning wetland? So I was looking to see, did someone objectively determine that the wetland was a poor functioning wetland? I couldn't find that anywhere. Does anybody know the answer? Yeah?
I did have to repeat, but I found the wetland delineation and there is a portion of the wetland that is deemed to be low quality with the credentials of that requirement.
Okay. So when you come up, you can, you can repeat that so whoever might be in the universe online can hear it, okay? I have a couple extra seconds. Of course. I'll yield my time. How's that? Thank you.
You are the applicant.
Yes, I am.
Are you the landowner?
I am not.
Okay, that's why I got confused. It's like, it's usually the same person.
I have the landowner, I wouldn't be doing this.
All righty. At that point, we will call for supporting testimony. If you signed up and you have supporting testimony.
So that we're clear, what you're, it's supporting of the person who applied saying no to this, not the supporting of the side of it, okay? Because the applicant of this hearing is the person who is appealing, not the person who wants to build in this area.
For lunch, let me... On the sign up sheet, if you said opposed, does that mean your proposal?
Yes. I saw nobody moved and I think some people came to support, so that's why I wanted to give the clarifying. So if you are supporting this motion, this is the time to speak.
On that sign up sheet, the well's signed in directly.
It's all right, we'll start before opposed.
We will get through this. Supporting opposers.
Yes, so in an appeal, the applicants, if they don't agree, they can appeal it, right? To modify their own approval if they don't like it, that can come to the board. In this case, a neighbor has appealed, right? It doesn't agree with the approval of this. So right now, the applicant is the appellant, Steve. So we also have the landowners, which were the initial applicants, right? We should give them an opportunity to make a statement before we go to public comment.
Okay. Applicant, owner, landowner.
So with, with that after public comment, it's typically that the applicant gets the rebuttal. So in this case, we would do a rebuttal by the applicant, a rebuttal by the landowners, and we close.
Okay.
I know it's a little confusing in these appeal hearings, so...
So the opposers or the supporters? Nothing confusing about this.
Is the landowner present that wants to speak? There you go.
All right, so I mean, just...
And state your name for the record.
Eric Hanson. And so when we, when we put this plan forward, it follows in line with my background being in permaculture and regenerative farming. And this is what I stated at the CUP, I believe I stated at the modification. One of the major functions of our property is to be a demonstration site for regenerative skills, getting people back to farming. I think a lot of people don't farm because they're intimidated, they've gotten away from it. And so this is a place that they can come to. They can witness it, we can actually give them hands-on training, take them from being inspired to gaining confidence, and that's the only way they become actionable. And that is one of the primary focuses. When it comes to the cabins, part of permaculture also deals with not just farming, but it's demonstrating ways of doing things differently that can support ecology and the environment. You guys saw pictures of clearly areas, and there's many others around the lake that have been granted 404 permits where they bring in fill material and they completely destroy that ecology and that environment by doing that. And oftentimes then, they have to buy wetland credits to offset that. In my personal discussions with the Army Corps, at the beginning, they initially started talking about 404, 404 fill permits, which I said, well, that doesn't really go in alignment with what we want to do with our project. The whole point is we want to keep the integrity of that ecology and that environment. How do we do that? To which the Army Corps came back and said, well, it's going to be more expense, but you can use helical screw piles. And those screw into the earth, and they do not upset the ecology whatsoever, and they leave it intact. And they said, matter of fact, that's been a big source of frustration. Where you guys are at on the lake, everybody wants lakefront property, but a lot of that property, it has standing water. We don't have standing water, not in this area. And they come in and they get 404, 404 fill permits, we would much rather see people be using these screw piles. Problem is, they really haven't been demonstrated a lot. They are in wide use and there's other places in the country you see a lot, a lot more of them, but not here. And so in the recent conversation I had with Megan, she said, you know, it's been a big source of frustration that we don't see more of it. We would much rather have people using these methods, leaving the integrity of that and building a structure above it than applying with us to come in, getting us involved, and ruining it. And so, you know, it's a wonderful place on the property. Again, it doesn't have standing water. It has its own microclimate, it's where you're going to see ferns grow, things of that nature. The other piece of it was that we respect our neighbors. I know many of you don't feel that, but we really do. These cabins are tucked away in the forest, and that was part of the purpose too. We didn't want to have them out in the open. We wanted them to be private, tucked away back in the forest where, you know, you're not looking at them, the whole experience is private to the property. And so it creates a wonderful environment back there, a very wonderful teachable environment where people can get exposed to that microclimate. And we've chosen to build in a way that does not, and I really want to stress this, upset the ecosystem. And that is from the Army Corps, who is the specialist when it comes to defending wetlands. So I guess that's what I have to say about that. Does anybody have any questions?
I do. How do you address the concerns about the setbacks? Or do you feel that your proposal is in alignment with supporting this, the ecology there?
And that's... I believe it's absolutely in alignment. I mean, we've seen people that build on point zero, right on a wetland, like in the middle of it with zero setback with a fill permit, and by doing so, they completely upset the whole integrity of the area. We're taking it and demonstrating something that we would like to see people doing more of too. And that is use helical screw piles. Build something above it. Allow that ecosystem to flourish and continue to do what it does and enjoy it. You don't have to get a 404 fill permit to do so. And so, any other questions?
I do. On the, you referenced the Army Corps of Engineers, but is their response essentially saying unless you are doing, discharging something, they have no authority to give a comment on it? Is that how you interpret what they say? Because they, when I look at this, it talks about section 404, and then it says that the Clean Water Act is to regulate the discharge of dredged and/or fill material into the waters, including jurisdictional wetlands. If a proposal construct does not include a discharge, then they don't have authority over it.
Correct.
So are you saying that that means that they recommended what you were doing?
They're the ones who actually told us about the helical screw piles.
And that your method won't give discharge into the wetlands?
Correct.
What about displacement of the ecosystem of the wetlands, especially when you're building over the top of it? So wetlands, it's not just, it's an area that itself is a delicate ecosystem. It's also arguably in this county, we have a significant number of wetlands. So when you look at the setbacks, it does say it's a minimum requirement unless there are other conditions that make it a poor functioning wetland. So in your information, do you have evidence that this is a poor functioning wetlands to where the setback minimum should be reduced?
I'd have to look at the delineation. The, so low and high quality, the high quality would be where you're going to see a water thoroughfare. water thoroughfare. That's where the water's going to be most present, it's going to be the highest. And, that is, it's kind of tough to see on this, but there is a forest line that comes across, let's see.
So, so are you saying that that hasn't been clearly stated as to whether it was a poor functioning or not, but that you think it's...
It's definitely upland, from the low point of the wetland, which is your high-quality wetland. And so, and the same thing that you see on the pasture. So, when they delineated that, you can see that where it goes upland, in the pasture, it becomes low quality.
Do we have a designation of low-quality wetland? Because that's, that's essentially, when you look at it, it's, yes, it uses may in another section, but when it comes to setbacks, it says a minimum setback. And you're asking to change the minimum setback, and it actually gives a condition by which the board considers changing the minimum setback. So can you point me to where I can see evidence that it's supported by changing the minimum setback?
Do we have that wetland delineation handy? Or is that something? It's in one of your files, got it here. So...
Because that's not referenced in this, in any of the actual decision-making, was that this wetland has been determined to be a poor functioning wetland, therefore...
I can't speak to it right now, I don't have the information in front of me.
No worries, thank you.
Problem is, as far, to make that really accurate. When it comes to the helical screw pile, that is, that was directed from the Army Corps. Dealing with the, both below soil and above soil, these structures are built about a foot and a half to two feet off the ground. They allow things to travel through them, they're completely enclosed underneath, but there is no change to the form and function of that wetland. According to the Army Corps, animals will continue to exist there, they're not going to be stopped from doing in there.
Thank you. Alright, do you want to let the applicant rebuttal?
Mr. Gabel, so we get this right now? What's our, Mr. Chairman?
I think the rebuttal comes after public comment. Right, so, at this time, we'll go into public comment.
Let's scratch those sign ups, you've got the names on them. And I would just go, you know, for however Jake, whatever Jake recommends the, I should order B.
Okay, well, the opposed are actually four, right?
Yes.
And the applicant is not the landowner. And this is Thursday, though, right?
Yeah.
And this, two o'clock. So, Lowell Magalby?
Yes, sir. I'm the neighbor to the north, Lowell Joseph Magalby, and I'd like to tell you that I have reviewed all the detailed specifications, which is coming up, but as an overview, and as a commissioner level, deception here is that when you have a retreat or a farm-to-plate, it used to be, it's on the farm, to your table, right? And it's all very nice and organic area. Here, now we've gone farm-to-fork, so we're selling food by the box and the fork to the public. It's commercial, commercial use permits are now applying to actually commercial uses for the neighboring property with, so basically, you're asked, you're saying we can put in, cover up the wetlands, which reduces ag and forest, that's what it was, AF, residential, and now it's a commercial restaurant with unique packaging and for sale by the fork, by the, because general public, you're putting a bar, restaurant, business in a residential facility. And that, even though the applicant claims that's the business intent, they find, and the county has been very gracious by trying to find something that actually works for this, but it really doesn't account for the original intended use. What they declared they really want to use it for, yes, we find something that might apply, but it's not really in line with having a commercial restaurant in a residential neighborhood.
Thank you.
Devin Kirkwangler?
I'm the applicant.
Okay. James Thompson?
Good afternoon, Commissioner. My name is Jim Thompson. My wife and I live at 34 Hallen Thompson Road, which is half mile down the road from this property. We've, we've been, or my family, we've been there since 1957, so we have a pretty good idea of what, what this area is like. This, when this particular proposal was made, it was, it was, it was agreed to by the county as a retreat. Now, now they're, they're changed the term into a private community facility. I'm not sure what the difference is, but the retreat was, as it was explained to us, was several small cabins where people would come and stay, and they would teach classes in agriculture, cooking, and so forth, and people would stay for a few days and then, and then leave. Private community facility, I have no idea what that is. Sounds like a, a community to me, and that's not what we want.
Thank you.
Rose, is that right?
Yes, she's right.
What's that? Gene.
Gene?
Gene Dogg, yeah.
Yep.
I do have a question. You say that there's no standing water.
Okay, the questions would be directed at us.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Okay, he's, he claims that there's no standing water there, but yet he cut all the cottonwood. Now, I've been a logger my whole life, and cottonwood, adult cottonwood will, mature cottonwood, will suck up about 300 gallons of water a day. So now by removing all those, you are going to have a wetland, you're going to have more water to deal with. And I'd like to know what, what he's going to do with that.
Thank you.
Lorna? Okay. All right, Jennifer?
I'm Jennifer.
Thank you, Chairman, Commissioners. My name's Jennifer Ekstrom, I work with the Idaho Conservation League, and I'm here to support the appeal of MOD 0001-23. We do appreciate the proponent's stated desire to enhance visitor connection with the environment and the idea of stewardship, that's awesome. Unfortunately, the proposal to allow three cabins to be built within the wetland goes too far and is contrary to these goals. As wetlands serve critical ecological functions and are being impaired at an alarming rate, these cabins could be built without infringing on the wetland setback requirement. This application to build in the wetlands fails to meet the statutory provisions of Bonner County Code 12-733, wetland buffers and setbacks. Provision B of this code requires the building setbacks, as we've discussed, to be a minimum of 40 feet unless it's demonstrated that the wetlands are low quality, in which case setbacks cannot be less than 20 feet. So a portion of this wetland, I did dig and find the wetland delineation report, which I'm sorry I didn't bring with me today, but it looked like, on that map, approximately like one-fourth of the wetland, maybe one-third of the wetland was deemed low quality, so that would require at least a 20-foot setback. While provision A states that Bonner County may require buffer areas, provision B is not a subset of provision A, and I just wanted to make sure that that's clear and stated. Provision B, which is the setback requirement, that must be considered as an independent provision. Buffer areas may be required to be more restrictive than the minimum, but not less restrictive. The staff report highlighted a statement from the Army Corps that the applicant is proposing to build these elevated cabins, and they don't require a fill permit, which has already also been discussed, but the applicant seems to insinuate that this precludes Bonner County's obligation to follow their own code, which it does not. Elevated buildings in no way preclude Bonner County's requirement to adhere to the provisions of 12-733B. And the 40-foot or 20-foot minimum setback must be adhered to. The staff report also indicates that a septic system, oh, I wanted to say one thing else about the Army Corps of Engineers, they are not the stewards of our wetlands. They have a process where they approve fill of, of wetlands. And I think the proponent of this project, and I agree that that's less than desirable. My desire would be for these cabins to be set back, rather than having them fill the wetland or be built within an unfilled wetland. They could be set back from the wetland. So the staff report also indicates that a septic system already exists on the site, that's for a single-family site. Since June of last year, Panhandle Health District has been stating that they need more information before they can, can consider a permit for this conditional use. And there are inconsistencies, they've been stating that there are inconsistencies between the application and what they have been told by the applicant. So it's still unclear what bathroom facilities may be under consideration, but if the cabins are to include bathrooms, there would be sewage pipes from the elevated cabins over the wetlands, and we certainly do have concerns about the safety of these potential pipes over the wetland, because the sewage would have to be pumped uphill to the site that is under consideration for a drain field. And while these sewage issues may not be a direct violation of county code as it currently is written, to permit this modification before the bugs are worked out on the sewage issue is an overt illustration of where our code is currently lacking. But to finalize, considering that the application is out of accordance with Bonner County Code 12-733-B, we ask that you deny this modification request. Thank you.
Eddie Katron?
I do have a question. My question, concern is that with these buildings, even if they are elevated on a wetland, you're going to have to get from building to building, from building to the community center, whatever it is, so there's going to be walkways made over this area or some way, people are going to have to come and go from these cabins to other buildings. How is that addressed? And then the other concern regarding wetlands is, there's been a road that's been constructed on the property that's other than the original driveway, and it goes the front of the perimeter and back in, and my concern is, has that been done over top of wetlands as well? And I think that even though these buildings are elevated or walkways elevated, you're still blocking sunlight from these areas that you're already intruding upon, and that's another concern. Another question is, how will that affect the other things that, like the sewage pipes? How are these other things that you're not going to maybe put in with screws, how will they affect it?
Carl?
Carl?
Okay. Alice Magalby?
I'm a smart person, I support my wife, whatever she says.
Alice Magalby?
Hello, I'm Alice Magalby, and I live at 3449 Ranco Loop. My property is on the north side of the contested property we're talking about. So they are going for two conditional uses. The retreat, which has been approved, and the private community facility. So the retreat, the codes on that, on 12-333, commercial use table, retreat shall not be used by public, a general public for meals or accommodations. The definition given in 12-818, the definition of a retreat states in there that retreat facilities, buildings, are not permitted, or are only permitted, sorry, for those who are engaged in retreat activities, and shall not be used for the general public for meals or overnight accommodations. If you look through their application, the private community facility is the dining hall for the retreat. You cannot have a facility being used for a retreat and for an event. That, they cannot coexist together. The definitions do not allow for that. The dining hall and the cabins can only be reused for retreat purposes, and the private community facility are for events and weddings, and that is not a retreat activity. Otherwise, if you approve both of these community, conditional uses, what you will have is you will have a retreat for a few days, and then you'll have a pop-up restaurant in the dining hall, and you will have a motel, because people will want to enjoy their evening of a restaurant and not drive home and rent out one of the cabins, okay? And there is no oversight to this. The next thing is, we slowly talked about the inadequate sewer, which, which clearly in the commercial use table, they must demonstrate adequate sewer, water, and fire protection. These cabins have a wet room, an open shower next to a toilet, and they have stated in previously, they're using a composting toilet, and then outside of that is a vanity, okay? The water from the shower and the toilet are considered gray water. That cannot go into the wetlands, because that will damage and interfere with the waters. And that is stated in Idaho Sewage Rules, I-D-A-P-A, blah, 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 blah. I can give you all the numbers if you want them. So, and that comes from Panhandle Health. The other problem is, the cabins are equipped with a microwave oven. So, what's the definition of a kitchen? If you look it up in your approved dictionary, it is a place with cooking facilities. If you look at the definition of a microwave oven, it is an oven that uses microwaves to cook food. So they are putting a kitchen in each cabin, and that, according to the codes, accommodations of cabins without kitchen facilities. So they have already violated code, that is directly stated. So, and if the cabins are approved with the microwaves, that vanity sink will then get turned into not just a handwashing station, but it will have food waste, and that will make it black water, black waste. That's not gray water, and that requires pumping uphill to wherever their septic is. None of that has been worked out, absolutely none of it. And then the only thing else that I think is very important, because he says he wants to respect the neighbors, is to put a fence around the retreat. Code 12-226, conditional use permits, conditions, et cetera, et cetera, stipulations may be added. And number 11 says safeguard to protect adjacent property. My property is adjacent. F, we need to safeguard my property and everybody else around it by putting a fence in that keeps people, their guests, from wandering off onto private property, and it also keeps my liability down. They won't let their guests wander off, I'm liable if they get hurt on my property, and it's just mountains and bushes and trees and, you know, logs, you know what, things. So I request safeguarding adjacent property with a fence around the retreat, all of the retreat land. Thank you, have a great day.
I have a question for you.
Oh, yes.
With your fence idea. If you put up a fence, do you think that negatively impacts the wetlands and the ability of animals to frequent it?
The fence that, that's already fenced in. They already have a fence on the pasture side, which is the western side. The fence I'm fairly talking about is all along the north, the east, and then the south, where you see the woods, that's all open. And my, I can, I can envision guests coming, oh, we have a couple hours of downtime, they're going to go start hiking around.
I, I don't disagree with you, but my question, do the animals have the, you're changing the flow of wildlife through the wetlands with the fence?
So there's already a fence around the wetlands, okay? So that has already been, if that's a concern, that's already been changed. Deer jump over it, okay? And they go under, you know, small animals will go under the bobb wire, is what I, what I would envision, and I've seen elk jump over it. So, no, a fence would not...
If you increase the amount of fencing that, you don't think animals would have an issue going through the wetlands? Because you're talking about the fence that's already there, you're asking him to put up more fencing?
Yeah, well, there's only a fence in the front part, along the Ranco Loop, just the third of it, or fourth of it, on the eastern, western side, okay?
Ma'am?
Yes.
I'm just curious about this fence. Now, are you wanting, are you wanting, not the applicant, the property owners?
Right.
Do you want the property owners to pay for the fence that you want? Are you offering to pay for the fence? Two one, I mean, I'm just curious. I, I live, I live in town.
Right.
And I live on an alley.
Right.
And I have a rental behind me, and it kind of, it ebbs and flows. Sometimes I have great neighbors.
Right.
Sometimes, they're always stuck with me.
Right.
And I built a great wall so that I could be a good neighbor to them, and they would not be stuck with me, but I paid for that.
Right. So, previously... So previously, when I've lived in town, neighbors have jointly split the cost of the fence.
That's actually in state code.
Okay, right.
Oh, well, I just paid for it because I wanted the fence my way.
Right, right. But I also look at this as commercial property. It's getting a commercial use, it's getting a conditional use, and this is also part of doing business, is you fence in your business area.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Tim Kramer? Did we lose Tim Kramer?
I'm here, but I got nothing to say.
Okay. Richard Schmidt? Did I say that right?
Yeah. Hi, everyone, I'm Rich Smith. I'm the new owner of 3688 Renko Loop, and I'm just about two parcels south of them. I'm life's alcohol with my daughters, and we're really excited to be moving in next to Nicole and Eric. I'm a regenerative farmer myself, and have about 12 years' gone, and so I really understand their passion for preserving the wetlands and maintaining the ecosystem. I think I'd remind us all that, you know, despite, and by the way, I hope that I can be friends with all of you, even though I'm in opposition to the applicant. But it doesn't sound like we're here to adjudicate whether or not the conditional permit goes through, it's really about the cabins and whether they have the right to do that. And I would remind everyone that it, should there be a ruling in opposition to them building the cabins, most likely they would just go to the Army Corps of Engineers, get a 404 fill permit, put them in anyway, and really disrupt the wetlands. And the reason we're here is because they don't want to do that. Because they want to put the helical piles in, do their best to really preserve the natural environment, which is really what regenerative farming is all about. And I think we need about a thousand more of them in this community to do that, to really provide the food security we need for this county. So I'm very much in favor of what they're proposing. I'd also say that it's really hard to be a farmer just off farm income. I think a lot of you probably know that, and that's why we see the big monoculture-type farms sprouting up, that we, you know, caused so much damage to the environment. So I really respect what they're doing and trying to have a kind of a diversified approach to income streams. And I think that's really the spirit of the cabins and what they're trying to do with the retreats. It's very, very hard to make a living just, you know, selling food off a 36-acre farm. So I'm very much in support of what they're doing, and I just wanted to offer that.
Thank you.
Welcome home.
Thanks.
We always welcome the good neighbors. So Max Singleton? Keith Oldham? Oh, here he comes, here he comes. Hold on, Keith. Here comes Max.
My name is Max Singleton, I'm a 501 Renko Loop girl. And I farm, I farm. I have a few cows and a few hogs, 220 acres. I also have a path through my property where dogs and other people have been coming through, and I won't be able to, can't seem to be able to keep them out. But what my concern is, commercializing our farmland, incentivizing our rural communities through this project is not good. And I'm totally against it. I always will be. I understand what they want to do. If they turn this community center into a commercial endeavor, we're going to have a lot more people in our community than we want, that we don't know. So I stand against it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Keith Oldham?
I'm good.
Okay.
I'm Cynthia Exerian. I actually welcomed Eric and Nicole first to this community. I was their real estate agent. We looked at a lot of different properties with a lot of different ideas, but I have never had clients, and I've been doing this for a while, who have gone through the painstaking, intense research it takes to properly use property. Before we, they even closed on this property, and I'm going to butcher poor Tom's name, but Tom Dubrendor, yeah, thank you, nicest man. He is literally, for those of you who don't know this, wetlands are very tough to protect in this community because there's now one person.
Can I actually ask you to talk there?
Sorry to talk here.
Well, because when you move away from the microphone.
Got it. So there's literally one man left standing in this community who can do soil testing, which Eric and Nicole did for that entire property of wetlands prior to the close of that sale. They have put a lot of, not just time and energy, money, to ensure that they have done everything they can to protect. So I have to say, and I appreciate your question about the wetlands and the intensity of water versus less water, I know they, they have a report that Tom did. Now, with the use of that report, just as another additional information, the wetlands were established here back in the 80s. The Corps of Engineer took pictures from airplanes to establish the wetlands in Bonner County. So since 1980, I can assure you, our landscape has changed for various different reasons. All right? For various different reasons, reasons, whether houses, I'm sorry, I did it again, I feel like I probably should have stood up there, huh?
You can switch it if you want to, but if you don't talk in the microphone, we can't hear you online.
Okay, and I'm getting low on time. But I'm just wanting to emphasize the effort and the intense desire to maintain the wetlands integrity, to ensure that what they do build is proper. Using the drilling process that they're talking about is the least disruptive way. Again, very few people do it because they know it's cheaper and faster to do fill, and they're not looking to do that. Being higher in the wooded area is a higher elevation of that property, and again, that report from Tom would show you that, which would probably also indicate the difference of wat, uh, wetness of that land and that dirt on that property. So I'm sure there's more that they can give you in terms of that differentiation, but I just, I think it's important that we encourage this kind of lifestyle in living and farming, and it benefits everyone in this community. So, thank you.
Thank you. William?
Yes, I do live here. I live right down.
That's mystery.
Can we not, let's not address each other, each other in the meeting, please.
William Gatsby, I'm Fire Commissioner for Westside Fire District, and let me be clear, we're neutral. I'm the SubDistrict Commissioner for Renko. And in reviewing the document about this, there's a whole list of state agencies and Panhandle Health and everybody, we're included on that. You guys have a copy of that. However, you're, the first gentleman to speak said we were notified about this. We were not. If you review the list of email addresses, we're not on there. And I've worked with Mr. Elmont today to try and correct that. We're working towards, in the future, making sure that Westside is in the loop for these type of things. One concern is if they're moving their event center or community center or whatever, the Fire District needs to weigh in and make sure we can get a fire truck in there, adequate water supply, sprinkler systems, things like that. There's also was a concern about a fuel storage tank, and the Westside Fire District doesn't know about this. So we did not weigh in on it, and we need to be in the loop.
Thank you.
Jim Friedler? Friedler? We lost Jim.
He's here but silent because I didn't see anybody leave.
Oh, so anybody else that didn't mark on the list?
My name is Jeff Downs, I'm a neighbor. So knowing that the Army Corps has no authority on project, I went to the state governing agency. The website states, Idaho Department of Fish and Game and Wetlands critically responsible for essential habitat. Fish and Game is the lead agency concerning wetland issues and management. My concerns, this is front and center on Fish and Game's website, they sound serious to me about protecting one of Idaho's diminishing precious resources. Why does it not, why does it not draw concern that they haven't been responsive and have no comment? Were they only contacted once? I would think that they would want to know about what's going on. As a state leading agency on wetland protection, does the Fish and Game know about the drastic changes to the property and the purposeful redirection of surface and storm waters? Knowing that groundwater per the well is very limited, was this and is this, and this is a question, a deliberate effort to starve the wetlands of the required surface waters vitally necessary to recharge the system? Now that the state and Panhandle Health are dealing with apartments, they are not bungalows, they are livable dwellings with bedrooms, bathrooms, and kitchens. Is there a comprehensive plan and design to remove the wastewater from the structures? Power can be easily supplied overhead. Can the gray and black wire be removed from that fashion as well? What about walkways, and surely the puddle and wastewater lines will not be trenched through the wetlands? Other question. Is Fish and Game aware of the plan to use helical piers to support the new apartments? Will the new piers be drilled to a depth below the current wetland saturated strata layer? Knowing that water follows a past, path of least resistance, is this an effort to essentially drain the wetlands using these conduits? The building site was not on the lake's edge, per the examples that were given. There is no replenishment water available such as Lake Ponderay. The statement was made, and I'm not starting anything, but the statement was made, they will just fill in the wetlands per the Corps if need be. I believe that, because I believe this is a business and money's involved. So time will tell how these proceedings go, and what they actually do, and how they move forward.
Anybody else?
We have two online.
Okay. Light one up.
Lisa?
Hello?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah, state your name for the record.
Lisa Baldwin, and good afternoon, commissioners and citizens of Bonner County. So, first of all, I want to say that the, that the Army Corps of Engineers, they are wetland professionals, and this is something that's already been approved, and they have deemed this appropriate, and Eric and Nicole have gone above and beyond, above board, in doing things right with the screw piles. And so that shows you right there, there's a lot of integrity involved. I like what the gentleman said, the one neighbor, about bringing, bringing food security for the community. As most of you probably know, and the other thing I want to say before I go there is that the woman who was talking about the microwaves and the fencing, she went about four minutes. So if necessary, if I need to go that long, please allow me to. Um, so the food security, as a lot of you probably know, they're putting crickets in our food, and they are doing other things with our food, injecting mRNA in our food. This is a source of clean food that Eric and Nicole are attempting to bring about for our community. So food security locally is so very important, and I am so excited with their project and what they've been doing. And I took a tour of their land, and I also have been a small farmer in my life, and I have been involved in sustainable agriculture and organic agriculture, and their regenerative farming methods are way above and beyond with excellence and integrity with their methods in comparison with the, the broad term of sustainability now and organic farming practices. The other thing is, is that microwave is not defined as a kitchen, by the way. There's been some exaggeration and projection, projectional statements that have been running rampant in this session. There is no covering up of the wetland that's being proposed. And, you know, are there any synonymous meetings with retreat, educational facility, so on and so forth? And they, these are not livable dwellings, they are not livable dwellings with bathrooms and kitchens. So there's been some exaggeration of the meetings. So I am very much for what Eric and Nicole are doing with this, an educational farm. A lot of our youth need to be educated, a lot of them don't even know how to grow anything, or they think everything comes from, you know, what they eat comes from the grocery store. So this is an opportunity to educate our community, establish more food security, and so their methods definitely help the environment and the ecology of the whole 36, and so, 36 acres, I think it's 36.5. So you, neighbors, would be happy that you have such neighbors with integrity and people that do things with excellence. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next one there, Jacob. Can you hear us, Sally?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yeah, Sally, state your name for the record.
My name is Sally Langimer, I'm a resident of Bonner County, I live in Sandpoint. Friends, I'm, I am in support of their project that they're doing out there. My kids and I have been out there to visit the farm several times, and they've taken extraordinary pains to, to follow them, like Lisa was saying, with educating myself and my kids about their practices out there and, and how they're going to, how the regenerative farming is going to work, and, you know, just to teach us about farming. I'm, I am not a farmer or former farmer, but I've learned so much being out there, and my kids have had great experiences visiting out there and have learned a tremendous amount. We, I don't have any concerns that they are, that, that they're not taking every possible precaution and pain in protecting the environment that, on that property. I would be shocked to find out that they were, that something they were doing was not in the most positive ecological approach.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any more public comment?
Yeah. We got one more on line number 88.
Okay.
Trent Presley, I live straight across the street on the 20 acres, right directly in front of these folks, Nicole and Eric's project. From what I've seen to start with, when they went in and they came to Bonner County and they went to all these, the authorities have needed to tell them what to do. Okay, I see where they're getting, when they're told to do something, they've been doing it, and it seems like they keep getting kicked in the teeth over this, and I've watched everything going on. I mean, this thing affects me more than it does anybody. It's right in my front yard. I see, it's basically a farm with a couple little tiny homes on it. Everything they've done, the food sustain, the way they're doing the greenhouse, and it just, it's kind of baffling that, how much care they're taking in equal, or, you know, the economics and the eco, eco side of it. I just, I don't see, they have never been a problem, and I see nothing going on there that disturbs me personally at all. I see what the kind of care they're taking with what they're doing, and the, and the steps that they're getting into to make it right. They're into this wholeheartedly, and I think they're doing a great job. So I don't see any problems with what they're doing, being the guy that is the most affected by this outfit. Matter of fact, some of their, some of the stuff they're doing, we're going to try to do across the street, just because the, the food source and the being all-natural is, is a smart move nowadays, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So you got another one online?
Yep.
Scott?
Scott, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, name for the record.
My name is Scott Brickman. I grew up in the, in the Selly Valley, and I own a home in Old Dover, so I completely understand the knee-jerk negative reaction to development of, of any kind. But I think we should recognize what Eric and Nicole have done with the property since they purchased it. I mean, they've done, they've done terrible things, right? They've built a barn, they're raising a Noah's Ark of animals, and they're trying to do things that are going to educate our kids and our community about modern and in some ways better farming techniques. You know, as somebody who's a, as a Sandpoint native, I've been super excited as I've explained, you know, what they've, what they've got in mind. And if they want to try a little bit, earn a little bit of extra money selling herbs at the farmer's market, or a couple sites of beef to people. More than anyone I've ever met, they are trying to do the right thing. And there are a lot of people that aren't. You know, based on the tone of some of the comments here, you'd think they were paving the pasture and building a high-rise, and it's nothing like that. I think they're going to be wonderful stewards of the land, and I think this will be a great, you know, addition to the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I spoke once, but can I, can I make a comment?
Go ahead.
Okay. My...
State your name for the record when you get up there.
Okay. I'm Patricia Petron. I live at 2342 Renko Loop. And while I appreciate the people speaking, you know, saying that this is a wonderful thing and all, to be real is those people do not live on Renko Loop, and the concern is as these permits go on, and if we get into commercial, it is the commercialization bringing that to an area that is not commercial. And are these things, are, already we're seeing that these things are not following codes or haven't really been considered. You can have the permit, but can you do the sewage? Can you provide the wetlands? It's like everything's running ahead very quickly, but there's no accountability as far as are these things being met as we go? And it's nice that people, and I'm sure they are wonderful people, and I'm not saying that they're not, but it seems to me that the people that are affected, the people that live on Renko, and the concern that it be turned into a commercial area, I think that is important. And the follow-up, are the rules being met? Are the conditions being met? Or are these things being granted before conditions are met? And pretty soon we have everything there, the conditions aren't met, but we can be commercial. So that is my concern with the whole thing. Is it turning a rural community into a commercial, traffic-filled place? That, that's my concern.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, that it?
No.
Oh. Oh my, sorry. State your name for the record.
Annie Smith. And to speak to that only because, and boy, do I not want to be on the bad side of any new neighbors, but we are currently purchasing property on Renko Loop. Honey, what's the address?
368.
Yes, that's where, that's where we're buying. And one of the things that we are most, my husband is passionate about privacy, like really passionate about privacy and security, and does not like heavy traffic flow. And we have had the chance to get to know Eric and Nicole and really dig in about their intentions, about the kind of volumes and numbers of people, and they have eased every concern we have, and we are passionate, to the point where it was like, oh boy, do we want to purchase property in a place that's going to be like a stampede of people? That's not what we're looking for. And they have, when we saw their plans and how painstakingly they've gone into this, and my husband and I have been studying regenerative farming for a long time, and they thought of everything, and their plans are beautiful, and I'm, we are just really excited to support them. But we're also, and you know, one of the things that really spoke to me is we never heard a negative word about anyone who was opposing them. And that just showed me that they, that they cared so much even for the community, that they know is upset, and I understand why, I completely understand why. But it was just beautiful to hear how they dealt with all of it, like, and cared about the people even that were opposing them, and that just spoke volumes. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So at this time, we'll close group.
Can I give my time to Jeff Downs?
Okay. I'll keep it short, I know we don't want to go. Jeff Downs, make a quick point. Nobody has judged these two one bit, whether it's their character, lack thereof, or anything else. Nobody here who opposes what they're doing has said one negative comment, one negative thing, one negative, any point whatsoever about the farm. Everybody thinks it's awesome, everybody thinks it's great, everybody supports it. Why we're all here, and why we're dwelling on these rules and regulations and codes in various agencies is the commercialization of the property. And I think that about sums it up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I applaud everybody's behavior here today. Things don't always go that way. Y'all have been a great group. So at this time, we will open it up for rebuttal.
Who's first?
Who wants to go first?
Applicant?
Okay. Well, no, that's okay. That's fine. I thought that was the order, I don't know. Okay. You know, this is the, I think this is the third meeting I've had to regarding farming work. And Eric does a great job of his intentions, his desire, his passion, you know, and to me, yeah, he's selling. He's selling his dream, his utopia. Fact of the matter is, it's kind of making a dystopia for us in our loop through the commercialization that's happening. So, yeah, I mean, it looks good from afar, but when you're next to it, there's going to be a lot of issues that we're going to need to contend with, and there isn't going to be the accountability from what I understand, especially in Bonner County. Now, if it was in the city, there's ordinances, there's rules, there's regulations, it seems like, but out in the county, there tends to be more suggestions, how you should behave, what should go on, as opposed to any type of accountability that would be helpful to the surrounding neighbors. And, you know, I put this together, and it was regarding, I tried to put this together in my comments towards the code. Okay, so the wetlands was an issue. You know, Eric spoke to the wetlands, but he didn't speak at all to the private facility community, and then also the educational retreat. Why didn't he originally report that? So this seems to me like, okay, one minute we go through this educational retreat, and then we go as an add-on to the private community facility. He didn't speak to that, and what his intentions were there. It's a great concern to a majority of us here, a large majority of us. And then the other one was sewer and water. That was never even talked about whatsoever either. So this is all to code inadequacies that are here, and he didn't even address any of them but one. And so I, I'm still questioning, you know, the viability of this original modification and of the conditionally used permit. So that's kind of what I have to say now. I would like to make the comment that this was supposed to be adherent to the Bonner County code, not about the retreat activity. Okay? Let's see what else. Also, I believe the wetland delineation report is attached to another planning permit and is not attached to the CUP or the MOD. So applications. You can only get this report if you request additional permits on the property. And Trent, it's great that your neighbor's across the street, that's wonderful to hear, but are you paid, are you a paid employee or a paid contractor with Eric? A lot of people. Okay, just wondering. And it's also my home. I don't, I just...
Do you get to ask him a question?
No. So anyway, that's all I have to say.
All right, thank you. Planning Department.
Commissioners, thank you. I know Brett, planning staff for the record. So a few things that came up that I heard addressed directly to the code. First, I want to start off, and this is true of everybody that owns property in AF zone throughout the entire county, and those folks on Renko Loop. Since 2008, there's many uses that are allowed in that zoning district. So Bonner County provides code as a residential use table, commercially used table, industrial use table, public use table, resource-based table, and accessory use table. And as we look at all those, and I won't bore everybody with every use that's allowed in the AF district that somebody can come and apply for, but for example, in the commercially used table...
Do you want to bring that up?
Are we supposed to be looking at it?
No, I was gonna, I probably can give it a shot here.
All right. Just tie this up and stress this. because people seem concerned about commercial type uses or what can be perceived as commercially uses. Code clearly states what is conditionally allowed and permitted in the different uses. For example, AF can apply for a condition use permit for a retreat, but they could have also applied for a repair service for boat repair, they could have done an RV park, they could have applied for recreational facility, they could have applied for a conditionally used permit for a racetrack, for example. As we scroll down to the industrial use table, they could have gotten into food and dairy processing. And all these are true of anybody that's in the AF 10 district in Bonner County. You can apply for a condition use permit for a cemetery, let's say. So getting back to, or getting to the private community facility, that falls under churches, grange halls, public or private community facilities. And this is what they were discussing wanting to do originally for the original CUP. I missed that, I did not put that in my original staff report and review those standards.
You're saying the private community, that's what you're putting on that, on the churches groups?
So that all falls under the condition use permit. So if somebody in the AF district wanted to start a church, they would have to come in and get a condition use permit to build that church in Bonner County.
So there is ordinance.
But if I want to do a grange hall, me, anybody in the AF, this is where we put that, or public facility, somewhere, the only thing I can think of is majestic possibly. Uses like that. So private community facility can be viewed for, I don't know, we've seen people use them for corporate retreats, for example. Up in the little head of what I wanted to. As far as restaurants go, they can't open a restaurant because the code already calls out restaurants and the use tables, and it prohibits restaurants in most zoning districts. And we can take a look at that if you'd like, commissioners. Questions? Thank you. Restaurants are not allowed in the AF district, and that's where the AF district falls in. So it's permitted in the commercial district, industrial, rural service center, rec, and out by village. Those are places where you can have restaurants. Even in the out by village rec district, you have to get a condition use permit. So the code prohibits them from running a restaurant, from anybody in this room driving by on a Saturday night and says, hey, let's go have dinner there. We've had too much to drink. If they have alcohol, I don't know. They can't rent a cabin from them. If that, or the property owner decides to take that route, they'd be in violation of their condition use permit, the original one, and they could face, have that revoked, for example. So all these uses are afforded in here. If we get into the industrial table here, they could open up a sawmill, for example, with the condition use permit. Anybody in the AF district could.
Instead of going through the list of what they could do with this, can we give some answers on like the wetland question that's come up a couple times with respect to setbacks?
Absolutely. I was getting to that, Commissioner, but I just wanted to point out that there's other, what, or it's perceived by the public to be commercially uses allowed in the AF district. So I would invite everybody to take a look at this code. If they're interested in doing something, come talk to us. We'd be more happy to have that conversation. So getting to the wetland code. And so here's 12-733B as it's written and found in my presentation. There's not a shall, or a may, or a should in this first part. If it's found to have low quality, then it could be, or setbacks to low-quality wetland may be reduced to 20 feet. And so those are all may, which are permissible, but there's not a shall be 40 feet from. And as we learned in the definition of the setback...
Before you go back, can we actually read the first part? It says, "Building setbacks to wetlands of a minimum of 40 feet unless it can be demonstrated." So if we don't skip that portion, which, that was one of the reasons I was asking that question, how do we justify changing the setback from the minimum of 40 feet?
I don't know, Commissioner. I guess that's what we're here discussing, you guys are here to make a decision on it. How many, we just read the code for what it says?
So if I'm going to play devil's advocate here, because sometimes this does happen with planning, is when we're going to give an example, you went down to that doesn't say shall part, but the part that I was asking, and I asked it, tried to ask it of everybody, is what about the first part that says the minimum of the 40 feet? What is the, what is the objective thing that the commissioners should say, because of this, you can change it from the minimum of 40 feet on that particular piece? That's what I'm looking for, because I read through this, and I didn't see what allowed us to move from the minimum. So it didn't have to say shall because it said minimum of 40 feet, and that's what I'm looking for. And so if your answer is that it's just up to the commissioners to say whether or not it has to follow the minimum, I don't see where, how we can do that unless it gets pointed out to me, because I didn't see...
And I agree, Commissioner, it is a challenge for you to interpret that. It's not our responsibility to interpret the code that way and make a decision on it.
Thank you, Daniel. Thank you, Daniel.
Mr. Brett, how many, how many files are, how many files have come before the county where there's been discussed using these helical screws? Am I getting that right?
Piles.
Piles, excuse me. How common is this? How many people are willing to do this? This is the first I've heard of it in almost 11 years. So this is unique? Correct. Okay. It is. And reading RB, and to get back to Commissioner Williams, RB and that question, Commissioner, the state code allows for people to ask for deviations to requirements. So if you interpret that as a requirement, you also have the ability to make a determination if you'd like to deviate from what would be a requirement of the 40 feet. This one seems just kind of odd to me, and because we are above the wetland, this seems pretty unique.
Can I add something?
Absolutely, Swati.
If we go back to, if we go to the purpose of wetlands...
Would you identify yourself and come on so that people can hear you, Mr. Stogie? Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Swati from Bonner County Planning Department. If we look at the purpose of wetlands, the purpose of this chapter is to measure, to provide measures to protect and maintain wetlands. Now, if the commissioner decides that raising those structures above the wetland save, or provides that safety to the wetlands, then that's one way to look at it. We give you a reason as to why this variance to the setbacks should be...
Thank you.
Could you address, I was brought up, and I've heard this a couple times in regards to different files...
to different files. What is the jurisdiction of, who has jurisdiction? Which agency? Does Idaho Fish and Game have any jurisdiction whatsoever in reference to wetlands in Idaho? In regards to land use planning? Because it's my understanding that they don't, that Idaho falls under the Army Corps of Engineers. I just want to make sure that, am I getting that right?
Right, they're all separate agencies. If we look at, if we look at letter A, 12733, it lists out Idaho Department of Fish and Game, US Fish and Wildlife, US Army Corps of Engineers. And the Army Corps of Engineers is the only ones that left to comment. Idaho Fish and Game just responded with no comments. So I, I maybe want to draw to the conclusion that they have some knowledge of wetlands and how they operate. And if they had concerns, I would assume they would probably have commented.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And all Commissioners?
Yeah.
Got it.
And so we'll close to all public comment and rebuttal at this time. And we will discuss it among ourselves. One of the things we're tasked with is.
We should give the landowners an opportunity to rebut.
Oh, yeah.
I'm, yeah.
Eric, give me one.
I, I think that in the last three sessions, I've said what I need to say, essentially said what I need to say today. You'll have the decision to make and do our best to do something to demonstrate a better way of approaching sensitive areas. Despite what happened today, I hope more people move forward using methods like we're trying to use, so.
Can I say something?
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Nicole Wilson. What I would like to share.
Could you stand on the mic so that everybody on line?
So I, I just wanted to make a comment on, on a few things. And one is us not having another well, us not drilling, us not doing the gray water. We're working with people, yes. We had architects. We, again, we are hiring certain people and we're learning along the way. And we're not trying, we've been very transparent. We've had people over, our neighbors over, before we ever even did any of this, explaining to them what we're doing. So I know neighbors that aren't very transparent. But what I'm trying to tell you is we are reaching out to people who we hire as professionals to guide us. And we're learning. We're not trying to be sneaky. We do have a well. Yeah, those applications didn't get filled out completely because we had architects who we are no longer using. And we're learning this stuff on our way. So just so you know, yes, that the well water is, we've had people out telling us where we can drill, where we can't. These things are happening, but there are steps to it. And it does cost money. So we're trying to take these steps and we're learning along the way. So I just wanted to let you know, someone was saying Eric didn't answer these particular questions. And I wanted you to all know, we are doing everything with permits. We are paying for our permits. I know there's a lot of things you don't have to do in Bonner County, but we are being an example of that and doing that. And so sorry, our well hasn't gotten, it's like a year waitlist or whatever. And we've been on for a year. So we are in the process of all of that, just so you guys know. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So we are tasked with making our decisions not based on what they might do on their property down the road, or what they could do on their property down the road. But we have to make decisions based on what's been presented to us and what is actually before us at the time. And we can't let our emotions or our, our opinion affect that. We can, we've looked at files where we thought it is completely asinine ideal, but it fell within the guidelines of the law and we're tasked to follow those laws. And so they go through. We've been on some that we thought was great ideals, but it didn't meet the standards, or there was some type of hitch in the road that prevented that from going forward. So those are things we're tasked with. Somebody had made a comment as to a bunch of things that should be or might be. Well, they've got 11 shals that are part of this condition. Not optional, they're shals. They will have to do those in order to meet the requirements. And so that's what we're tasked with. And so we'll discuss amongst ourselves. For me, I think they have gone above and beyond probably any file that I've seen come before me in the last four and a half years. Highly commendable. Highly commendable. And so I understand everyone's concern. I've lived here since 1988. I have wetlands on the backside of my property. I understand the wetlands. I understand flood plain. I'm in it. So, yeah, I understand it. So for me, I think they've done an excellent job and I think they're a plus to the community.
Mr. Chairman, I admire anybody who wants to be a farmer these days. My parents are a little bit older than me and they're out pruning. And farmers have to sell their produce. That's the way it works. I'll just speak, my parents on five acres grow thousands of pounds of blueberries. And we eat a lot of them, but we don't eat all of them. And anybody who I hear that says that they want to be a farmer, I say, God bless them because there's a reason that my wife and I live in town. And I'll be going out to my parents to help prune. I do some of that other stuff. And it's their property. For me, this is, it's a challenge. Like I don't, I don't understand the whole helical coil spring, piers, whatever thing. But what I hear is that we've got people that are willing to spend more money than is necessary in order to protect the environment so they can teach people how to farm. And that seems like a heck of an idea. And I'm looking at it and it's a 36.5 acre piece of property that could be split into three, to three 10s or however, that's not a, I think there's going to be less impact in the perpetuity of this and being able to retain the rural character of Bonner County. I am 100% in support of farming. So I'm, I'm ready to fish your land.
The question before the board isn't whether or not we're supportive of farming or their endeavor. It's an easy concede that they have gone well above and beyond to work this piece of land. That's not what we're being asked to, to take a look at. My, one thing I cannot get over is I don't lack the understanding of the setback. I don't see the argument for reducing that setback. And that's what I was trying to extract from planning. My other issue that I can't overcome, and I think it would be a disservice to the community, I don't think it impacts the ability, but if the Fire District did not actually get routed to confirm the health and safety of the community, since that's one of the directives under land use, they should have to give that comment. And if their recommendation was that they should give the comment, also for the safety of your project, you guys need that in place. And they presented that that didn't take place and they needed to give a comment. And I think it's, it's, it's in your favor to, to do something like that. It's, it's not a question of are you guys going above and beyond because it's obvious that you are. When it comes to wetlands in this particular county, it has been a discussion. We have rules regarding the wetlands to protect the ecosystem. And you guys have considered everything that you could possibly consider. The reason there's a conditionally used permit is because it's not traditionally automatically allowed. And so it requires the consideration. And so because it requires the consideration, we have to do our due diligence to say, what is the reason that I say the minimum setback of 40 isn't required? That's where I don't see the answer. I am building on the pylon. I understand that because there is a, there is a change in how the wetland would be impacted. But it doesn't change that the minimum said 40. It didn't say 40 unless you do this. It said 40 unless you can show there was a different delineation, which planning isn't offering as a response to me. But even if that wasn't the issue, I think it's too quick of a decision when Fire just said they haven't assessed this particular piece and they, they were not routed, but we said they were routed. So I think that at a minimum, it needs to be delayed so that Fire can confirm what he mentioned when he stood up. Because we, that is a requirement. In terms of Fish and Game, they do regularly talk to Bonner County specifically over wetlands because we have a lot of wetlands. And we, as a county, have consistently historically ignored their concern over us increasing the value of our wetlands with respect to ecosystems. I don't believe that you guys are ignoring that. I'm just saying that at some point, when people keep telling you, pay attention, and you ignore it, then they say, I'm not writing another letter to you guys, you're not looking at it. I think that is what has happened here. I don't know that Fish and Game would be negative about what your endeavor is. My question comes back to Fire should give their comment. And then the setback question is not clear in the file of what lets me move from the minimum standard. But I think it's, there, it's easy to do the, you guys are doing a fantastic thing and it's valuable in the community because it goes without saying. Everybody wants exactly what you're doing. You just happen to have a wetland in there that cogs a little cog. I don't think that it's accurate to say that you guys aren't doing everything you can because you are learning as you go, like every last one of us. You just have a problem on that particular parcel of land. But for me, I think this should be delayed until Fire actually gives their response to what, because we are charged with Lupa under the health and welfare of the public and we can't do that when they tell us they did not get routed and we're not able to give a response. But I think you guys are doing a, it's an amazing endeavor. But the wetland and the Fire responses, I think, necessary for all of the public. It's not just what you guys are trying to accomplish there. Because you'll increase traffic on Renko Loop Road and there'll be more people there. But Fire didn't give an answer and they want to give an answer, it sounds like.
I would entertain a motion to amend the approval motion to meet whatever the Fire District recommends. Because he was concerned about access. He's got to be able to get a fire truck for the structure.
It's his vote. This is his appeal. It's not their thing. So he's not asking you to deny it, but do what the Fire wants.
Yeah.
We, we did check the letters that went out. Selkirk Fire was noticed. Selkirk under Personnel side lumped in with West Side Fire and Single Fire. I don't know what their internal process is. And if there is a different email address, we can send directly to the Chairman of the, that Fire District, we can. But from what I understand, they all show the same personnel. And how they route internally these files for comment to the different boards, I don't know.
I know. And if he can, he took the time to come to tell us, he needs to give us an answer. We need to get the answer, so.
Mr. Chairman, I sat down with the Fire Commissioner from West Side and that's who he was asking. And if Selkirk Fire was noticed, then the question has been asked and answered and I'm prepared to make a motion.
But the question, what, I mean, it's not, it's not actually a service to the property owner for us to not allow them to get the answer because they might have an adjustment. So he actually came here to say, we didn't get it routed to us. We didn't give input, which we're charged with the health and safety of Bonner County when we're looking at land use. And he's saying that he came here to tell you he did not receive that information.
Entertaining motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to affirm the hearing examiner's decision requesting to allow for private community facility use, a reduced wetland setback for proposed cabins and relocate the Event Center Building, finding that it is in accord with the general and specific objectives of the Bonner County Comprehensive Plan. And Bonner County Revised Code is enumerated in the following conclusions of law and based upon the evidence submitted up to the time the staff report was prepared and testimony received at this hearing. I further move to adopt the findings of fact and conclusions of law as set forth in the staff report and direct planning staff to draft written findings and conclusions to reflect this motion, have the chairman sign and transmit it to all interested parties. This action does not result in taking a property. Mr. Gabel, should I read the findings of fact into the record?
Unless you're making the changes.
Oh, there's my motion.
I'll second the motion to advance it to vote.
Roll call vote.
Commissioner Amit?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
I am voting no because we need to have the input from Fire on this issue. They came to tell us that and we are charged with the health and safety of all of Bonner County, which includes the property owner. And we could wait to make a decision to ensure that it was not an adjustment that was needed before we move forward.
Commissioner Bradshaw?
Yes. So the appeal was denied. CUP is approved. And we will go on to AM 00.
Can we take just a, make a two minute break? I'm going to go to the room.
Okay. We'll take a two minute recess at 3:16. Say 5:16.
Going out, going out towards my floor. Well, that's because we get accused of breaking the law. Actually, I have not been accused of breaking anything illegally yet today.
We're ready. It's been more than two minutes.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. It is 15:22, whatever that is. It sounds like a code. Cut chapter 15, paragraph 23.
Uh, no, we don't.
Hi, Dave. Open that up, man.
Um, so just for the record, I threw away the sign-in sheets for this one because I can see that Mr. Man is here, but everybody else signed up on those sign-up sheets for the last hearing. And so, um-
Well, this is just a workshop. Sign in, you can, but each year, we'll just take. Hey, Dave, you got anything?
Oh, great. Okay.
Can we note that Commissioner Williams is on? If she comes back, then we can say she's here. But can you just say, hey, we're ready.
All right. It is 3:23 and we're back out of recess and we will be going into file number-
It's a workshop.
Workshop.
Or a workshop.
Thank you. Make sure it stays because we're not in a hearing. We're not going to file.
We're just going to do a workshop.
Yes.
Guys are all ready. And so, present is Commissioner Ahmet, Commissioner Bradshaw. Commissioner Williams left the room. And so, Swaddy.
Good afternoon, commissioners. We are here for the workshops of files AM 0006-23 and file AM 0008-23. The comprehensive plan components that we are discussing in these workshops is agriculture and economic development. If we look at the Idaho code, which I will bring it up on the screen in just a moment. So, this is what the state code gives us guidance to in regards to the agriculture component. An analysis of the agricultural base of the area including agricultural lands, farming activities, farming-related businesses, and the role of agriculture and agricultural uses in the community. And it for, well, let's start with the discussion for agriculture component. The recommendation from the planning commission was received for this component and it was presented to you. I'm a little slow in sharing files on screen. That's the update that was recommended by the planning commission on April 4th. It talks about the total number of farms in the county, the percentage, the percent change every five years, number of farms by size and acres, number of farms by value of sales, food marketing channels and such. And the component that is, that has been recommended by the planning commission, it meets the basic standards of the state code. And I can take any questions if the commission has any.
I don't have any questions. I read it. This is self-explanatory.
Now, are you the applicant, the landowner?
I'm the project representative.
That was confusing. I got confused.
Yeah.
No, I have no questions.
If it's a workshop, when do we get to have input?
It's, it's actually a workshop for the, for the board. They will be able to question the staff and the planning commission.
Okay.
The opportunity to participate in a public comment workshop is usually with the planning commission.
They will have a hearing on this in the future before they adopt it?
Yes. The upcoming hearing for this is on, I believe, May 24th.
It's all right.
It's May 24th, I believe.
If you'd like, Mr. Man, I'm happy to sit down with you and I'll, you can ask me questions. I can try to answer them.
And the next component that we are discussing is economic development. So, the state guides us to do an analysis of the economic base of the area including employment, industries, economies, jobs, and income levels. And the component was proposed, the update was made by the planning commission and proposed for recommend, proposed to be adopted by the board. I will bring it up on the screen. Yeah, so the planning commission made this recommendation on March 7th. It talks about the unemployment statistics, labor force demographics, employment trends, economic industries, commuting patterns, et cetera. And some summary of the economic development section. So, here we can look at some key demographics of the county. Labor force, employment trends are here. Some seasonally adjusted unemployment rate. This is the list of some key industries in Bonner County. And we got this data from UCUW, US Bureau Level of Statistics. So, these are some of the key industries here. We can see it in the graph below. Information, construction, leisure and hospitality. And the blue, the blue lines here show the annual average employment increase, percent increase. Red is for annual total wages percent increase. And green is for annual average pay increase. We can see the highest annual wage increase has been in construction and information. The highest annual average pay has been, has been in information and leisure and hospitality. And the employment increase has been in construction and information. Just to give you an idea, and you've also seen that most of the employers in Bonner County, establishments in Bonner County have employees of five, yeah, five. We have small establishments in Bonner County, most of them. Just shows that in the graph form. And these are the top employers in Bonner County, Lake Pontcharlie School District, Lighthouse, Bonner General Health, Bonner County Schweizer Mountain, Almond, and some others. And commuting patterns. So, approximately 10,000, 10,400 people in Bonner County live and work in Bonner County. Approximately 4,000 people live outside of Bonner County but commute to Bonner County for work. And about 6,000 live in Bonner County but commute to other places for work. That's basically it then.
It was self-explanatory again. I read it and-
Okay, thank you.
That's all I have.
That's it? Okay, then.
You guys have any changes or anything else you want staff to modify or help you with essentially, right? Have we did invite the planning commission? They're not here. I don't think anyone's online for the planning commission.
How many, I guess one of the questions I would have, and because I haven't listened to all of them, how many public comments have there been in either of these two chapters?
So, on agriculture, we had four public comments. That was before the planning commission drafted their recommendation.
For agriculture? I read the ones, are those the ones included in file? I read all of those, okay?
Yes, yes.
Those were engaging.
So, we didn't, we didn't get any comments on either of these sections before the planning commission's hearing.
Okay.
Only during the, during the workshop stage. And then, we haven't received any public comments since.
Okay.
That's it? You guys are no fun. You give nothing for us to argue about or nothing. What the heck?
So, that kind of concludes the workshop?
Thank you.
Thank you. Just for the record, Commissioner Williams to let Claire know that she had to leave because she had to deal with a legal emergency.
Okey-dokey.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
So, are we going into the next one? Are that what we both have?
That's it, Mr. Chairman.
I was all excited. Surely, we have something we can argue and talk a long time and speak lots of words about.
So, we can adjourn. Thank you.
Okay. It is 15:33 and 20 seconds, better known as 3:33 PM.